Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Carson City Planning Commission to order. It is Wednesday, January 27th, and it is 5:00 PM. Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Chair President Swine.
Here.
Vice Chair Sattler.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Mondray.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Salerno.
Here.
O'Quams present.
Thank you. At this... Mr. Owen, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Our quiet allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the which stands on one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the public is invited to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Commission on something that's other than what's on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item C, which is for possible action, approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of December 16th? And entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, with one absent. Modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Is there any modification?
No modifications recommended.
Thank you. Disclosures. Any member of the Commission may wish to explain any contact with an applicant or the public regarding an item on the agenda or business of the Commission. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Salerno.
Yes, I have known one of the applicants, Mr. Sullivan, for many years, 15 years or so, but I haven't seen him in the last five years. I don't think I would have a problem with voting one way or the other, because I did so when I was on the Planning Commission with him many years ago. But I see no reason why I should not be allowed. I would leave it to our attorney to make that determination.
No, if it's purely just a personal or social kind of relationship and you have no existing ongoing business relationship with the individual, there is nothing that would require you to abstain.
Should be no problem, ma'am.
Yes, that's correct.
I would also like to disclose that I am acquainted with several of the applicants, or at least their representatives, Mr. Sullivan from Nevada Energy and Mr. Wilson from Rubicon. I have no financial interest with either of those other than paying my NV Energy bill.
And there's no issue with that, obviously.
Okay, moving on to public hearing matters. The first item, F1, is a master plan amendment, MPA-15-181 for possible action, to adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of a master plan amendment from the Carson City Parks and Recreation Department to adopt the Carson City Arts and Culture Master Plan as an element of the Carson City's master plan. Mr. Plummel.
Thank you. First, a couple orders of business for the public hearing tonight. You'll notice Susan's not here. She was sick today, so her name's on all these, but so I'll be covering and giving the presentations for all the items. So you might have to bear with me a little bit to search for some things if you have questions. And secondly, for questions from engineering, we have Stephen Potte from the Engineering Division sitting in tonight, and he may be with us at future meetings too, but Stephen's here for engineering questions. Okay, moving on to this item. As you said, this is action regarding the adoption of a cultural master plan, an element of the city's master plan. The technical procedure for that is to bring it to the... any element of the master plan has to come to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. You do so through a resolution. You'll be forwarding that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for final action. You'll see with us tonight from the Parks and Rec Department is Roger Mollendorf and Vern Cron and Ellie Bugley from the Cultural Commission. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to them. They're going to give the presentation on this item, and then we'll give it back to the Planning Commission for action and discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, for the record, Vern Cron, a senior park planner for the Carson City Parks and Recreation Department and staff liaison to the Cultural Commission, as you indicated, Lee, to my right, is Ellie Bugley. She's the chair, current chair of the Cultural Commission, and of course, to my left is my boss, Parks and Recreation Director Roger Mollendorf. So we're here tonight to share with you a plan. The presentation will be broken down into three segments. The first segment is we're going to let Ellie share with the Planning Commission kind of how we got here, how, kind of, what was the long trail that got us here. The next part of the presentation will be a video, a replay of a video that Kendall Harden, she was our consultant who helped us with the master plan. Unfortunately, she could not be here this evening, so we're trying to do the next best thing is to just replay the presentation that we had in front of the supervisors on December 17th. The Board of Supervisors at that particular time took action to make changes to it, so they have seen the document. It was never approved as a master plan. We just gave them the opportunity to provide input on it before we got here. We thought that would be a more prudent way to go than come here, you know, hopefully get an approval resolution, get to the board and have them change it, and then we have to come back. So we've hopefully short-circuited that particular round robin event, and so we've incorporated what the commissioners felt were important things to put into the master plan. And you have that document in front of you or as a part of your packet, the revised document based on the Board of Supervisors comments. And then after that, I have a few closing comments. That'll kind of get us through the end, and then we'll be able to take questions. So that's kind of how the breakdown of the presentation is going to go. Ellie, you want to start us off?
Sure. So first of all, I like that you talked about a trail, because I think without a plan, you don't know where you're going and you don't know when you got there. So the planners are the ones who keep us along the trail, and I commend you for that. This afternoon, or morning, I heard Mayor Crowell's speech about the state of the city, and we are really doing well. We have a wonderful plan that's being implemented for the city. And one thing that it lacked until recently was a specific arts and culture component, and that's what the Cultural Commission has been working on. We started by gathering four previous documents that were very good but somewhat out of date and were never officially part of the city's master plan. Over the summer, we compiled the best of those, put it together, and with the help of a grant, a circuit writers grant from the Nevada Arts Council, we hired Kendall Harden to meld our ideas and create a presentation for the Board of Supervisors. So we think it's in good shape now because they accepted the plan for comments. Their comments have been incorporated, and now it goes to you. So we hope that you are excited about having part of the city's master plan deal with what arts and culture do for a community, enrich us, enrich our quality of life, bring creative, innovative populace to the business community, and it also brings visitors and affects our economic bottom line. So I'm going to turn it back to Vern to show the...
Thank you, Ellie. We believe that when Kendall gave her presentation in front of the Board of Supervisors, we thought she did a phenomenal job, so that's why we're doing that. Besides, she can't make it tonight. So it works both ways. So it works for us. So let's run it. It's about 13 minutes. In your packet, there is a presentation, the PowerPoint presentation is in your packet. It might, the slides sometimes get a little blurry, especially when the text gets kind of tiny. So what I would suggest is that you kind of follow along in your packet, just kind of keeping, just kind of using the slides up on the wall, just kind of as a place finder, if you will. So anyway, here we go. If you can't hear it, let me know. We tried it prior to getting people in the room, so hopefully everybody can hear this as we go.
Thank you, Ellie. And it's an honor to have worked on this project with the Cultural Commission and everyone in the community who rally back to solid. I thought, let's see if I can organize this. Our planning approach was to look at the four documents that you had done in the past, including an art town meeting that the Nevada Arts Council sponsored in the community. We evaluated current data, as much as we could get, and using our partner, Americans for the Arts, which is our national data collector, we looked nationally at other arts organizations. And by the way, in the last 20 years, we, local arts agencies, LAAs or art service organizations, have grown from 400 to over 5,000. So this shows the economic impact that they're having across the country, and that goes from rural to metroplexes and multi-counties and cities and towns. We benchmarked outside models as well. We lifted our head. And then we began to draft and refine a comprehensive plan for the next decade, something we could really grow into that was specific and not just a bunch of dreams, but very, clarity is power in planning. This comprehensive plan has a structure. It offers real initiatives, programs, and solutions. It's organized in 11 clusters, and each one has a numbered section so that we can actually track these recommendations and suggestions. And third, it really allows us to add in, and for example, if we have more facility issues, we can also say that by the end of the calendar year 17, we've knocked off 58% of X section so that we can really report back to the supervisors about the impact of this study. Our guiding goals, and you have these in your packet. It was interesting, as I thought about these, I remembered that the Partners for Livable Communities has three goals for great livable cities. You have to have natural beauty, parks, walkways, open spaces. You need art and design, and you need a welcoming attitude to outsiders and visitors. And I think we've covered the waterfront in these wonderful guiding goals with plurality and ongoing cultural planning. The content sections are listed. I'm not going to read them. Again, I'm very proud of this one because I also read for outside foundations, and I look at this. The first thing you'll be asked if you want to go for funding is, where's the plan? And when you produce this, I'm very impressed. This is really a lot of hard work coming together. We look at the arts and prosperity. Americans for the Arts, and you have these in your packet, you have a short version of how it's been kind of summarized, and you also got a little arts and economic prosperity calculator. We did not have these econometrics, as we call them, until 2012. This is the first time we've been able to prove the impact of arts and culture in communities. Not only what arts organizations spend, but what their audiences spend, and how much money is going back into the business community. If you want to take issue with this, you'll have to argue with two Nobel laureates that developed these algorithms. But at any rate, you can see that we looked at the opportunity cost of not executing this plan. I mean, you can do nothing, and what would be the opportunity cost of that? And we looked at national studies and statistics, particularly in the arts and prosperity summary. And then we looked at that calculator. So I thought you might want to, these are national statistics. But if you want to look locally, you can see that this is a national industry, and I mean, these are pretty amazing statistics. And in your little summary, they actually compare it to other industries. It means business. They attract audiences. We have an, it's an economic return on the investment. They spur business development. We support jobs. We generate government revenue, and we provide the cornerstone for tourism. In fact, cultural tourism is such a growth industry today. Cultural tourists spend more money, stay longer, eat at the better hotels and restaurants. And it always surprises people because the first arts plan I did was for Seattle. It has a lot of sports industries in town. In every major city we've ever polled in, the arts in aggregate outpull sports. I think that you get sports. We work together. But it's really interesting that in the aggregate, the arts outpull this kind of activity. So in your packet, it's hard to see on the screen, but I actually gave you some local data. We took the Jazz and Beyond Festival, the Father's Day Powwow, the Western Nevada Musical Theater Company, the Brewery Arts Center, and I worked with the key people. They gave me their expenditures, and from that, we used the calculator online to generate real figures. So as I said, these econometrics did not appear until 2012. So we asked ourselves, well, how should we execute the plan? And you've done plans before. And one of the cultural commissioners kept asking me, well, why are we doing this again? And the idea is, you know, you really have to hold someone's feet to the flyer, who is professional, who's working 40 or 50 hours a week, really ensuring that this gets done. So we need to create and fund Carson City's own municipal agency for auction culture. In your packets, Supervisor Agon, and I believe the mayor and the city manager and many of you have been working on this, there's a one-page suggested organization and a funding mechanism for this municipal agency. This represents an investment in policy certainly, but also in economics and values. It's a real return on the investment. And this morning, I told somebody, after three cups of coffee, I got creative. I took your population from, what the KDO, which is 55,000 plus, and I multiplied it times the 2015 statistics I got from Americans for the Arts just this week. The average local arts agency per capita spent $2.61. So I multiplied that times your population to $144,000. And we're writing the money, kind of where we're thinking about this. But if you add the state and federal match that comes with this agency, if you go after it, that's another $1.54. So you multiply that, and you're up to $229,000 plus. So for about 120 hard cash contribution, you're getting back already a 60% return on that. It's kind of interesting. So the costs definitely outweigh, and very seldom do I get to say this, this kind of project impacts every person in the community, from youngsters to aging adults. The arts mean business, and they deliver these kinds of benefits, economic, educational, workforce. I always love to add that Switch is running in Las Vegas, and it's going to run it here because it's moving north. Art matters, and they want people who have been, it says, our state's employers need rock stars that have had access to quality interdisciplinary education that includes art. We want steam people, not just stem. I think the most amazing stuff has happened in the health benefits, not just for aging, but from what we're doing for wounded warriors coming back, for people with emotional issues, even young children and autism. And it's just amazing what we're able to do. The civic benefits, festivals are one of those wonderful things that brings us all together in a very safe place. What a wonderful thing in this day and age. And cultural tourism benefits, as I pointed out, and also that sense of place. You know, every community has its own personality, and you know, without art, we all look alike, just the same fast food restaurants, right? I'd really like to thank everybody who really worked so hard on this project. As I said, we even work with our national association, the Americans for the Arts. But there were people throughout the community that I made phone calls to, and I, like Ellie, I never got a reject. Everyone was really for this and very excited about it. So I thought I would leave you with one thought. I've done arts plans for state, state of Washington, first Northwest tire state, which all these had, everybody has their issues. In Washington, we have east-west split. I've done towns, rurals, cities. I did a six-county project in Atlanta. That was really interesting. For any of you who grew up in the South, my apologies, because what they would always say is, we do not have a problem here. So when it started out, you know, my research assistant on the thing said, well, I've got the answer. We're just going to shame them into doing the right thing. We're going to go to Washington, and we're going to get all the research on what makes a great city. So we went to Washington, we went to the NEA, we went to NALA, all these groups. They go, you know, that's a great idea. We don't have the research. If you do it, we'll buy it from you. So on the weekends, my research assistant and I, we produced this book called 50 Cities: Government and the Arts. And this is what we were able to prove. It was a win-win situation, and this still holds true, that great cities in the forefront of arts and culture support the whole spectrum of arts and culture, not just the big boys at the top, or maybe a few festivals here and there. They look at neighborhood situations, community situations, treasure institutions, all kinds of new forms of art in the media world and so on. The lack of available monies was never a deterrent. Innovative public-private financial instruments were invented in order to fund culture. The third one was, and I call this laser sharp vision is the critical key. That leadership follows the vision, and money never, money always follows the vision. It's never the other way around. The fourth one was, the LAA becomes a catalyst to form an empowered cultural constituency, and I think this is one of the great payoffs of doing this project, is that we have brought everybody together around a common thread, and we're seeing that. Whining, and I love this, whining and begging is replaced by pragmatic political pressure, peer pressure, media pressure, donor pressure, and public leverage. The underlying commitment is to equality, diversity, innovation, and cooperation, but it's characterized by real relationships, that is partnerships, alliances, coalitions, rather than hostile competition and unbridled self-interest. A win-win effort links all the arts and related activities under one umbrella of culture. We all start working together and helping each other. And lastly, and this is so important, the arts are considered essential services, not a Band-Aid or an afterthought. They are a key part of the planning and decision-making process at the local and regional level. We've already, I live by three dictums of planning. The first is clarity is power. The second is those who fail to plan, plan to fail. And we've knocked those two off with a really good plan. The third one is, the best way to predict the future is simply to invent it. I'm going to come back in a couple of years, and I can't wait to see what you do. So remember, art matters. Thank you so much.
And that was Kendall. She was very dynamic to work with. She was amazing. As Ellie had indicated, we had owned our grant, through the Nevada Arts Council, we were only going to get a $4,000 grant, and she put by far probably $20,000 to $30,000 worth of effort into developing this plan for us. She was amazing. She just never gave up on us, and she kept molding and helping and adding information. And you can tell just with her background and experience with putting together cultural plans, we were able to get an amazing consultant to help us do this. And I don't want to take anything away from the Cultural Commission either. We were having every other week meetings in July and August. So that was, that definitely put a kink into a lot of the commissioners' summers, because trying to balance around their schedules and get meetings and things posted and staff reports written, it was quite the challenge, not only for them but for us. And it gave such a great foundation that we were able to give to Kendall. She had a workshop in September. So it was one of those things that, this whole plan came together basically from the end of September till basically the end of November, again, because we had to get things ready for the Board of Supervisors a couple weeks in advance. So this plan couldn't have not come, could have not come together without the hard work of the Cultural Commission, doing all that foundation, having those previous planning documents, as Kendall referred to, and an amazing writer and an amazing person who put this together. So we were very pleased. So I wanted to give her some kudos along with the Cultural Commission. They worked really, really hard on this. So anyway, just to kind of close this out, I've got a couple slides here that I want to kind of show real quick. This is in your packet. It calls what's the research, what the research shows. Kendall talked a little bit about it, but I wanted to kind of relate these back to the findings that are in your packet. So for example, the first summary, what they talk about, arts and culture economic benefits, we have hung two of our findings, our hats, on this particular component. The two findings that are in your packet talk about the economic vitality as a part of the master plan, and two of the three findings basically settle in here for us. Helps communities to prosper, puts people to work, attracts tourism revenue, our business magnet, creates a distinct city identity, gives industry a competitive edge, and enhances property value. Again, those are things that you'll find in the packet that you have with you. I just wanted to, for the public, show those. The other thing, and this is really, this is really critical, I think, to the process, is that even though there is a lot of emphasis on the economic engine that cultural tourism can be for us, there are still other very important aspects of this cultural master plan. And they relate to education and to the workforce benefits, that this cultural master plan, we believe, will help shape the community in the future. Students engaged in the arts perform better academically and keeps kids in school, helps kids to succeed in life, provides skills critical to the 21st century's success, addresses a shortage of creative workers, and helps youth at risk. So that's another aspect of this plan that we believe that can move forward. Health benefits. Kendall alluded to this, but this is really, this is really something that was kind of an aha moment for me during the process, is that the arts and culture health benefits promotes physical health and expends, and expedites medical recovery, contributes to health and aging, helps wounded warriors and trauma survivors, improves medical environments, good for both mental and emotional wellness. So those are some things I really did not want to close this evening without highlighting. Everybody seems to be on the bandwagon of heads in beds, and that's important. Don't get me wrong. That's very important. But there are a lot broader aspects to this arts and culture community and to this master plan than just heads in beds. And then finally, the last part, that the other finding, the third of the three findings that we have in the staff report is the cultural benefits, the civic benefits. It contributes to community vitality, brings public life, brings public spaces to life, fosters civic participation, enhances civic dialogue, and becomes a communication asset in a global society. So this is a very broad-ranging master plan, and we're excited to be able to bring this to you this evening. And both Ellie and I and Roger are here to answer questions. And with that, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to start off by saying that I think that it is high time that Carson City had a cultural master plan. It is extremely important to the economic health of the community and the civic health of all communities to have a vibrant art scene. So thank you for your effort. Does anybody have any questions for any of the, anyone at this time? Mr. Owen.
As it applies to this, what is arts and culture?
Well, Vern is trying to find the definition in here. I'll say it includes, the arts include all the arts. Fine arts, visual arts, film, dance, music, theater. But also, the cultural part is history. The ethnic components of our community, their history. Things like the prison museum possibility. And the populations that helped develop Carson City. The Western culture, the Chinese. There's a lot to our culture. The Stuart Indian sites. And we consider that part of it, too.
Are there any other questions?
I'm just gonna let that stand. I'm not even gonna read it. I thought that was a great answer.
Mr. Sattler.
In agreement with you, my daughter, who's now 34, was very active in dance in this community from three years old. And having been a dance dad and all that, and witnessing all the other arts and culture that go on, we have such a strong area, especially in the youth and that. And I, it's just something about Nevada, and I think it's the people that come here originally with the casinos and the shows that have stayed and are still teaching here and working. And it's neat, it's always been there, the strength in the arts. It's neat to see it being put into a master plan and realize how good it is. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you. I think it's very, very nicely done. And I think that's something that, that this commission would wanna keep in mind anytime that we give approval to a major project, that we try to see that art is included, you know, within those projects. I think that's about all I have to say.
Okay, I'm guessing that there are a lot of people out there who wanted to address this item, or were here to hear about it, at least. So is there anyone in the audience who wants to come up and make a comment and give us your impressions, your ideas, your thoughts?
I just can't believe all you art people out there are silent. I just can't believe that. I always get phone calls from you people.
Yes, could you please sign your name or print your name on the sheet and indicate where you're from? That would be very helpful.
My name is Amy Clemens, and I live here in Carson City. And I am a business owner and a parent, and am behind this art plan. And I am really looking forward to having arts in Carson City so we aren't driving to Sacramento or San Francisco to participate and raise our children in the arts environment. So I hope that you approve this plan, and it's something that I'm really looking forward to. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Dana Lee Friend. I'm Marketing Director for Nevada Day, and I'm also a Naughty Team Mistress. And I'm here in support of the master plan on several levels. Nevada Day puts on one of the, well, actually, the largest and most fabulous, in our opinion, parade in the state. And we're growing. This year, our board passed that we're going to be changing the direction of the parade, and we're wanting to take it to Mills Park. We're wanting to grow with the multicultural village. We're wanting music and art. And we're wanting Nevada Day to be similar to what it started with, which was art and music, a Pony Express ride, essays, dance. And we're bringing much of that back. So for Nevada Day and hearing about the art plan, we're very excited because it gives a very important funding mechanism to be able to support the arts here in our community. As a Naughty Team Mistress, we are ambassadors to Nevada Day. We represent historic women of Nevada and men with charm, wit, and humor. And we're getting ready to start our street theater during wine walks, to where it's not gonna be just about wine walk anymore. Not that that's a bad thing. But we're going to be bringing in the Seventh Cavalry. We're going to have street theater. We're going to be performing. And we're very excited to be bringing back that small aspect of history alive in our community. Sometimes you'll see us talking on the Blue Line Tour. We're working with the Visitors Bureau. So when many of our multicultural people come in, he calls us and we're able to go and visit with him and go on a stroll and talk about our city. And they have an experience here in Carson City. We have so much richness here with art and music and dance and history. And having a funding mechanism to be able to support that, to bring things in, to do some research, to have more exhibitions, and to support not only what we already have, but have a better marketing way of getting it out there to invite more people to come. So we just from Nevada Day wanna say thank you very much and for all your efforts to do this. And we support you, and we are so happy to be a part of that and be a part of this community. And anything that you need that we can help with, we wanna be there for you. Thank you for your time. Let me sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Peckham. I'm the Executive Director of FISH, Friends in Service Helping. And the first thought is, wait a minute, he helps all these people in need. What's that got to do with art? There is such a craving for art in the community. We actually work with the pottery folks and have brought to the community an empty bowls project, where the community helps to make bowls, decorate those bowls. And then for donation, they get those and local restaurants are able to fill those with food. We're doing that in concert with the tree lighting and raising money for us and raising awareness because people take those bowls home realizing that there are empty bowls in our community and people need help. And we feel that being able to move forward with more concepts that are city-based. Right now, it seems an awful lot, there is some pretty good art around. I mean, the art on the highways had a whole new charm. There was certainly some differing opinions, if you will, at the time. But I think over time, everyone's accepted the art and for what it is. And it's beautiful. But so much of what goes on in Carson City is dominated by the state and whatever the state wants to have. Certainly, the grounds, the capital grounds are beautiful. But we think that being able to continue to move forward and make sure that Carson City has some say with what the look is and what the culture that we're trying to drive is, especially as we're trying to recreate downtown. We're trying to do our part as well at FISH, though it's a slow remodel. We plan on being done before Orem's be. Still a plan. But you know, the blessing is that the people that we normally rely on are working hard. And all these construction guys have real good-paying jobs. And that's another plus, that they can do that and we can continue to work with them. But again, the feel is that the arts are huge. My background, I'm a corporate guy. Hard to believe sometimes, but, and anytime when I was relocating with my wife, we looked, what was there for the kids? What was there that was, you know, brought some charm and we liked to be a part of? And we've got so much natural beauty here to encompass some of the artwork and try and enhance that. And again, with a Carson brand as opposed to just a Nevada brand, we think would be a great thing to continue to move forward. So anyway, those are my thoughts. And we fully support, or I fully support, us trying to move things forward to bring more people into the community so that they can appreciate how great of a community that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative. We've been in Carson City since 2004. This last February, we were invited by the city to hang the artwork in this room. So we have, our artist is actually here this evening. Claudia, you wanna wave? Claudia Knows, here from Carson City, did all of these fiber pieces dyeing silk with leaves that she picked up along her walks out in town and up in the hills. So those are natural dyes that created all the images on the silk. The Arts Initiative, what's being passed out to you are flyers that just came from the press. For upcoming exhibitions, we have exhibitions at The Brick and at The Courthouse. And you are all invited. Our next reception is February 5th. We feel very strongly that bringing visual arts into an active part in these public places really enhances the environment for our city. So we really appreciate you looking at the cultural plan, and we strongly support you accepting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I might start crying because I get very emotional about art. I'm Debbie Foster. I'm on the board of the Artist Association. But my family's been involved in arts ever since I was little. And my mother was one of the original people with the Proscenium Players through the Brewery Arts Center. And I have two sons now. They're 32 and 37. And I have to give credit to Gina Caskey Davis and Stuart Peoples and Karen Chandler at the high school for keeping my kids out of trouble and teaching them theater, I'm sorry, and singing and dancing. And they are still involved in the arts. And I just wanna give my recommendation for you to approve this whole thing because it's wonderful for our city. Our kids, we have a lot of underprivileged kids in this town, and we spend a lot of time trying to keep them busy in art projects. And they love the attention and the outcome. So I would like to encourage you to keep on with this. I'm glad it's happening finally. And come visit us at Nevada Artists Association at the Brewery Arts Center campus for the wine walks and to visit our shows. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give us your opinion?
I can do this, right?
Hello, everyone. I'm Barbara Dineo, and I am on the Arts and Culture Commission. And I came from the Brewery Arts Center to the commission because I really love the arts. And I served on the subcommittee. I thought we only had four meetings a year, and it wound up that we had one every other week. And, but I was given the role to contact business because arts and culture is supported by three different things. That's the community awareness. Business is critical. If we don't have business, we're out of luck. And then the monies that are within the government, kind of thing. So I started calling businesses. And I called Clickbond, and I called the hospital, and I called the schools, and called everybody. Had 18 different business owners who said absolutely, and how the arts have affected their individual businesses and how important they think it is. So with everybody else, of course, I'm in favor of you're doing this. I think it is an awesome thing for this city to do. It's not just the government being here and this being the capital city of the state. And it's not just gaming. This is us, and we need to do this. We need to get into the 21st century and move it along. So thank you for taking this on, and we're gonna have a lot of fun doing this together.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Well, I have to say that I think that it's really impressive to have so many people come out in support of a positive outcome for the city. Usually, when we have people come here, it's to voice an objection to something. And I think that it's really encouraging to see all of you people here in support of this initiative. Thank you. So at this time, is there any further board or commission discussion? Okay, please do.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-PC-R-1, recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-15-181, a master plan amendment from the Carson City Parks and Recreation Department to adopt the Carson City Arts and Cultural Master Plan as an element of the city master plan based on the findings contained in the staff report.
I'd like to second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to read the actual resolution?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of adopting, of recommending adoption of the Carson City Cultural Arts and Culture Master Plan element, signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous with one absent.
Thank you so much.
Again, thank you all for your hard work. This is an impressive document. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item. You're all welcome to stay. I guess I'll wait till things settle down a little bit.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item F2 SUP-15-175 for possible action, to consider a request from Roy L. Street, property owner Roy L. Street, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property-owned general commercial or general industrial located at 6343 Highway 50 East, APN 008-522-15.
Mr. Plummel.
Yeah, thank you. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I'll give a brief overview of this application. And for the special use permit, I just handed the applicant the late material that you have from the fire department there, and the applicant will have time to look at that. This is an application for a medical marijuana cultivation facility, as you said, located at 6343 Highway 50 East, which is actually a property identified on the map there in blue. It's a little bit off, it's off Draco Way. Is that actually the app? I'm reading the staff report. Is that actually the?
Yes, that is correct.
The address is actually, okay. But that's the location off Draco Way. This, at this application for this called at this application for this cultivation facility is actually the relocation of a previously approved facility which, on Sheep Drive, which you can see identified here just to the, just to the west of this current location. They have their state license or the, I guess the license is the term for the cultivation facility.
Provisional license.
Provisional license, and they're relocating to this location. Just going through a little bit, kind of zooming in to the property there, which is outlined in yellow. They'll be going into approximately a 13,000 square foot existing building on the property that'll be converted to the, to the new use. The late material here, this is the first floor plan and the second floor plan. This reflects the late material that you have in there. And just, I just want, I'll just note that for the record that as an additional, based on the fire department's review of the revised floor plan, which compared to the floor plan that's in there, added some floor area on the second floor, the, the fire department's added condition would be that the addition of a new second floor space, as indicated, will require a code compliant fire sprinkler system that includes electronic supervision be installed in the building. So our recommendation would be with, with your motion to include that condition on behalf of the fire department. Notice was sent out to the surrounding property owners in compliance with Carson City Municipal Code and NRS. And as of this evening, we have received no comments from any surrounding properties or property owners or others either in favor or in opposition of this application. And so I'll conclude my presentation with that and be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to address this?
My name's Frank Street. I'm manager of the high C R cultivation. Not really much that I can address. Everything's there. So if you have any questions for me, feel free.
Okay, Mr. Sadler?
I'm not, my only concern, it mentions for your security system, the cameras going to a DVR and then recording every 30 days and outside, inside cameras, et cetera. There's no alarms going to a, where you would be aware at the time of a break-in or something?
Yes.
Oh, there is also?
Every door is alarmed. Every door will be key swiped so nobody can get from one room to another. If an alarm does go off, it'll go to Burgorrello alarms. They contact me immediately, as well as the police.
Just because this is so rural, I just, I wanted to confirm that. I figured that's the way it was, but that somebody would know immediately if something was going on. Thank you.
Ms. Munright?
I have a question. Thank you, Chair. On the conditions of approval number 34, which I'm sure you don't have this in front, but it's 34, it talks about the disposal. And it notes that any medical marijuana or medical marijuana infused product shall be rendered unusable before they're disposed. How is that done? Is it burned or?
It's not burned. It's shredded up, little tiny pieces, take another dump, notify the dump what it is. They dispose of it immediately, right at that point, and they'll bury it.
Okay. And then, that's interesting. Okay. And then I understand two here. I saw there were the requirements on the, like the ventilation, so stuff doesn't get out. What kind of byproducts are being, you know, getting out?
Sent out into the oxygen. Plants make oxygen. The smell of the marijuana.
But from the fertilizers or?
The fertilizers will be, 90% of it will stay into the plant, and the plant will just use it. If there's any runoff, it'll be taken out. At this point in time, what we're looking at is having to go into a basin, ran through a filter, and reuse the water that is used as a runoff. So we're not going to have any water going into aquifers or anything like that. As far as smell, that you would smell from the outside, there's carbon filters, UV light, lights that are inside of our ducting that kill smell and any kind of bacteria or spores and things like that.
Okay, that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Sadler?
Just a couple other quick things, and just wanted to know if they had been addressed. It mentions you are a non-domestic water sewer, so that the Health and Human Service, Environmental Control, if a conditional approval associated with septic system to support the proposed use. And also, it mentioned the Engineering Department about a traffic study or the lack of need of one. Have those both been addressed since this was presented or?
Not that I know of, no.
So there will be no, in your wastewater system?
No.
There will be no product going into your, your regular domestic drainage?
No. No, I'm pretty sure that's on a septic tank.
Right.
Which would put it into the aquifer, and no, we would not allow that to happen.
Okay. So it'll just be regular sewage that would be going into the, into the septic system?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I guess at this point, we will ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion and consideration.
I move to approve SUP-15-175, a special use permit request from Roy L. Street, property owner Roy L. Street Properties LLC, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property-owned general industrial located at 6343 Highway 50 East, APN 008-522-15, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, and adding the condition, the additional of two, of new second floor space, and as indicated, will require a code compliant fire sprinkler system that includes electronic supervision be installed in the building, such sufficiently.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second for Mr. Owen? Okay, is there any further discussion on this item?
Okay. Some comment. I will vote no on this project because it violates the rules of the United States government. It's not permitted according to the United States government. And I have been required to swear an oath that I would follow the rules of the United States government. So I just have, from my personal life, from what I've seen, I've never been a user of it, but I've seen so many terrible things result from the use of marijuana, both medical and recreational. So I will vote no.
Does anyone else have any further comment? If not, I would entertain, well, we have a motion and a second, I call for the vote. Those in favor of the, of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
We have five, four, and one against, and one absent. Thank you. Item F3, SUP-15-177 for possible action, to consider a request from Albert Reploge, property owner Albert Reploge, for a special use permit to allow an accessory structure that exceeds 75% of the size of the primary structure and exceeds 5% of the parcel size on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 4151 Ponderosa Drive, APN 009-148-18. Mr. Plummel?
Thank you. And this, this subject property is located in south, in the single-family one-acre zoning district in the South Carson area. You can see on the vicinity map here, it's just off Clearview Lane. If you remember, this is, this property was subject to a boundary line adjustment recently that increased the size of this particular lot that was smaller and basically traded some backyard space with another property in the vicinity. And there was, I forget if there may have been a variance that went along with that for some of the structures. But the applicant is coming back now to place an accessory structure in the open backyard area there within that parcel that exceeds, it exceeds 75% of the main structure. So there's two, two, two triggers for the special use permit for accessory, detached accessory structures when the aggregate of all accessory structures exceeds 75% of the size of the main structure. And then secondly, when the excess, when accessory structure exceed 5% of the total lot area. And in this case, it's both. And this is a, I think this, this lot is less than, than one acre. No, this, this lot is 1.33 acres in size. So again, just going through a little bit, a little bit of a different view of the property. This is a little better view of, of as it exists now. The new structure will be going into this area, I believe as part of it, this, this shed will be torn down. So, and then it's this large area here where the, the new structure will go. This is the site plan showing the proposed new structure, its location. It's a 9,000 square foot utility building. And then the last slide for this item is a picture provided with the application of the type of, of building that it will be. Couple of just additional things on this item. Again, the notices were sent out to the surrounding property owners in accordance with the requirements, which in this case, we had to go out 415 feet to get at least 30 unique property owners. And as of this evening, we have not had any comments either in favor or opposition to this. I believe I've heard within the office some neighbors inquiring about it, asking questions, but we haven't received any, any comments as of now. Oh, and the second thing I wanted to note was regarding, I think there was some questions that I got some clarification from, from the fire department. But on condition number 14 has to do with the building needing fire sprinklers because it's over a certain size, and the applicant may address this. But to clarify, from the, from the fire department, the condition does says it must have fire sprinklers. However, there are other ways through construction and separation of firewalls within there possibly to avoid that. But in any case, the intent of that is compliance with the fire codes, as there are other building codes of fire codes. But I just wanted to note that for the record. And with that, I'll conclude with my presentation with that. Note the applicant's here to address any questions as well.
Okay. Does anybody, before the applicant presents, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Plummel? Is there any landscaping that would be provided around the building? Or what's the department's view regard, with regard to that?
Yeah. In this, in this case, it's not, it's not a standard requirement for residential accessory structures to require landscaping. So, and I think with, without any other specific concerns about this particular site, and kind of looking at, let's see, even going back. So I think as, you know, Kathy Green authored the staff report and was looking at it and kind of evaluated this. And I think from the standpoint that this is very centrally located in the block. It's not visible from any right of ways. We haven't heard any issues from surrounding property owners about it. So at this time, we're not recommending any specific screening via landscaping.
Okay. Any other questions for Lee? Okay, would the applicant like to address this? First of all, let me ask, have you read the staff report and the recommendations?
We have, and we are in agreement with, as Lee pointed out, condition number 14, some clarification there from the fire department. With regards to landscaping, as the staff report points out, actually, you can drive around the entire block, and you can't even identify any of the structures that are located on this lot from the adjoining streets. It's absolutely isolated. With that, again, we are in agreement with the staff report and support the conditions of approval. We would like to clarify condition number 14. We have sat down with the fire marshal and the building official. The applicant is, is proposing to construct a firewall, a two-hour firewall, split the building into two, two spaces. That will eliminate the fire sprinkler condition. We understand the cities, the municipalities' concern. You may want to add some language to condition 14, that unless the building is separated into two, two fire areas by a two-hour wall, then the building will be sprinkled. Just for future, property owners may want to remove that firewall, so.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Sadler?
I just, seeing the size of this, I would normally, might have a little heartburn, you know, when it's 428%. But I drove out there myself, and thank goodness for the picture of the driveway, because that's the only view you have into that. And if there had been any neighbors, probably I might have had a little heartburn. But it sounds like there, because you can't see it from anywhere on that block, any of those roads. And the building looks quite nice as well also.
We, we assisted in the first round of applications. And honestly, if I hadn't seen the aerial photo in the parcel maps, I wouldn't have been able to identify the site, so.
Mr. Owen?
It's a large building. What's the intended purpose of that sized building in a residential area?
The applicant has a number of post-World War II automobiles that he's restored. Currently, they're being stored off-site, actually in a similar parcel, similar property, similar-sized building located to the west of this site. I believe he wants to bring them home essentially.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone here who is, wishes to address this item? Okay. Lee, on that, on item 14, on the conditions, could we just have that read, that it must comply with the fire code?
Yeah, it would suggest that the building must comply with fire code for fire suppression. Yeah. Simply the fire code, I think that, yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Because splitting it in half would make them both, what, 4,500 square feet roughly? So it'd be under the 5,000.
Yeah. And I, and I would just note, so these conditions, you know, obviously, we try to put together these conditions, and, and certainly, these are not all inclusive of all the building code requirements and fire code requirements that there are. But we try to put the ones in that, to make them aware that, and fire sprinklers is kind of a big thing. So I think that's the purpose that this type of thing would be in there. But, but the intent is just to meet the fire code. And if there's other ways to do it, to meet the code with sprinklers, that's the intent of the condition.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
Oh, I have a comment.
Okay.
I, I viewed the, the site as well, and, and I would agree with Commissioner Sadler's comments. It appears that the neighbors are not concerned about it, and I could not see much of where the building would be after driving around the block also. But I agree that it's a, it certainly is a very large building, but it sounds like a real fun use. So I would support it.
I have a comment also, and it's just kind of an echo, but I feel like for the record, I have to say that I was definitely a squeaky wheel on the last application we had like this. So I wanted to say that because there was no public, public comment and opposition, and it doesn't seem like it will change the character of the area, because you can't see it, I, I'll support this. But I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that, I did some calculations on the other buildings in the, in the area, and it's, there are, there are some large buildings that are on adjacent parcels. And I have to admit, I was, I was concerned about 9,000 square feet too. But I think that it's, the site sort of can handle it. And it's a big enough lot that, that it's not going to be a, a big issue. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, Ms. Meehan?
Before I make the motion, I just agree with everybody else that you really couldn't, I almost couldn't find the house. I had to drive around twice. It's like, and then that building to the, the white building to the right and that other to the, the white building to the right and that other building, they're fairly large buildings also. So it looks like it'll be just fine. So I move to approve SUP-15-177, a special use permit, to request to allow a detached accessory structure that exceeds 75% of the size of the primary structure and exceeds 5% of the parcel size on property zoned, single-family, one acre, located at 4151 Ponderosa Drive, APN 009-148-18. Based on the findings and conditions and approval contained in the staff report, do anything about condition number 14?
Just say as modified.
As modified, condition number 14, the building will meet fire code requirements.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent? Six, four? None opposed?
Two.
Okay. Item number F4, ZMA-15-178 for possible action. To recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of property located at Emerson Drive, APN 002-751-07, from single-family 6,000 to neighborhood business. Mr. Plummel.
Thank you. Yes, this is the rezoning of, an application to rezone property off Emerson Drive, which is on the, which is where Rup becomes Emerson Drive to the north of College Parkway, kind of as shown on the aerial photo there. And it's kind of in this area, it's in this block here, east of Emerson and north of College Parkway, where there's the Del Tacos there, the Lumison Associates offices, there's a church, and the Vet is there. So that's kind of generally where this is located. Again, just zooming in a little bit on this property, and I'll come back to this in a little bit for some discussion too. But so here's what the proposal is. This is a picture of the zoning map, which is currently zoned single-family 6,000, which the single-family 6,000 zoning continues into the residential neighborhood to the west. To the east is tourist commercial zoning. Again, that's where a lot of the existing commercial uses are. Across the street to the south is the apartment complex. And of course, the freeway is obviously a significant visual barrier to anything to the north in the single-family one-acre area. And the proposal would be to change that shaded area to neighborhood business. So the, this property, and in fact, all the properties within that block there are designated commercial on the master plan. So I think as, the zoning for single-family 6,000 predates the freeway being there. It goes way back. It hasn't been changed. So I think with the master plan adoption in 2006, it recognized that that was more of a commercial type of location rather than a single-family detached, kind of a medium-density residential area. So this rezoning brings it into compliance with the master plan. And the neighborhood business zoning is the least intensive commercial zoning. It does allow multifamily with a special use permit, so that would have to come back to the planning commission. We think that's, believe that's the intent of this application is to do that. But if it does, with this rezoning, go to commercial, it's lighter, lighter commercial type uses that are compatible with adjoining residential uses. Again, staff is recommending approval. Notices were sent out to the surrounding property owners. And again, on this one, we've received no public comment on this application. So I'll note the applicant's here, and I'm available for questions at this time.
Yeah, I just have a question. Could the city just go ahead and do a conformance rezoning for the, like the substation parcel too, so that we don't have a little island of single-family 6,000 sitting in the middle of that?
Yeah. So noted, in fact, that there's somebody here we can talk to about that and bring, for the next item. Yeah, that's something we could, if I get that in my notes, we can correct that maybe with the master plan update in November when we do other city corrections. But that would make sense. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Sadler?
Lee, having gone by there, is there any way or any plan to possibly have access to that property from the other side? Or is the only access ever going to be available off of Emerson? Could they come in off the other road from behind?
So, yeah, zooming in, so the next slide zooms in a little bit.
You see, it looks like there's almost.
It would be, it would have to be, so that doesn't go all the way to the cul-de-sac over there. But they would have to get access through private property to get that.
I didn't know if that road had a right-of-way continuing along the freeway back to that next road.
No, but I went to this, I went to this aerial because this shows the multi-use path. That's the existing pathway that's there within the freeway right-of-way. So and that pathway kind of borders up to the freeway right-of-way. So there's, it would have to be on private property.
Oh, so the multi-use path belongs to the freeway?
It's on freeway property, yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Wilson?
Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. This seems like a pretty well-informed group, so I'll try not to spend too much time repeating what Lee's already done. But I'll say just a couple of quick things. I'm tempted to make a joke and say, you know, could you piggyback my client's zone change on NV Energy? But I'll let that go for now. To respond to the question, I think certainly we'd have no problem with coordinating driving access of all those parcels. It would help us. So I can see that being a benefit. The only thing I would add is that this parcel is unlikely to be developed as a single-family. We've got the tourist commercial to the east of us, which is potentially very intense. And then we have, to the south of us, we have non-residential development already. So we're semi-surrounded by not single-family development. So I think this provides an even transition, which is something that most land planning documents promote anyway. So I think this is essentially a cleanup and a positive move. The ultimate goal is for multifamily development. The owner is a local family. They have a track record with multifamily property. So I think they know what they're doing. And I think it'll be a good round out to the neighborhood.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I think this is a pretty straightforward application.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's bring it back. And Mr.?
I think that multifamily would be a good use of the property. But that zoning that we would be allowing at this point in time would allow with a special use permit, a fast food restaurant, or, you know, that sort of thing. And that would be grossly unfair to the housing there across the street on Emerson. So I would, I realize that this is, you're going to have to come back again, if I understand this project properly, in order to get a use permit for an apartment project. And that, I have no problem with that. I think that's going to be fine. I just want to make the statement that if somebody plans on coming back to us and putting a fast food restaurant or something of that sort there, that this commissioner would be opposed to it.
Noted, and I would in fact agree with you. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to live next to that, and I wouldn't want to promote that.
Any other comments?
I can't see why you'd want me to put a fast food restaurant down there anywhere.
No, it doesn't seem.
It's so far off.
Yeah.
They're not too far away, the other ones. Yeah, right around the corner.
Yeah. Okay. With that, entertain a motion. Mr. Owen?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-15-178, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of APN 002-751-07, from single-family 6,000 to neighborhood business on property located on Emerson Drive, based on the findings contained in this staff report.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Six, zero with one absent.
You know, the Starbucks everywhere, right?
Thank you. Okay. Item number F5, SUP-15-179 for possible action. To consider a request from Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA Nevada Energy, property owner Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA Nevada Energy, for a special use permit to allow expansion of a utility substation on property zoned, General Industrial, located at 3175 Asphalt Drive, APN 008-522-07. Mr. Plummel?
Thank you. And I believe that the title's pretty self-explanatory for the item. A utility substation requires a special use permit. The subject property is the existing, is an expansion of the existing utility substation off Asphalt Drive down at the, in the Highway 50 East vicinity. It's delineated there. In the blue line is the property. And I think the entire property that this current facility sits on is outlined in yellow. I think it's clearly delineated on the ground. When you're out there, you could see the total area. So the expansion will occur generally to the south of the existing facility there. Kind of looking in plan view, you can see to the left, which is north, the existing facility, and then the expansion. Oh, this is kind of better, I think, showing the, again, the existing substation in this area, and this expansion is heading to the south there. Again, all within the existing Nevada Energy property there. You know, you have the staff report attached, again, on public comments. Notices were mailed out to all property owners in this case, within 675 feet of the adjacent property. And as of tonight, we've received no written comments or otherwise, or verbal comments for that matter, in support or opposition. And staff is recommending approval. And the applicant's here, if you have questions, and I'm available for questions as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Mark Sullivan, Land Use Consultant for NV Energy. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present this issue. And also, I want to thank you for paying your power bill. So we have that relationship with everybody on a monthly basis. So, you know, we're always corresponding with you. Actually, Kathy did a great job in the staff report. I mean, we reviewed the staff report. We agree with all the conditions in the staff report and really don't have too much more to add. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? I have one question. It probably doesn't pertain specifically to this, but will this entail expansion of transmission lines anywhere?
No, actually, we're just rebuilding this. Ultimately, just like you saw, you approved tonight, a couple of applications that you approved tonight for expanding uses, that drives more load. And then obviously, we have to supply that load. So over time, ultimately, this will serve a larger load. I mean, we're at capacity now with the current development and the system that we have in place. So as you guys continue to grow, as you continue to approve development, that's what you do, then we'll bring more transmit, we'll be back with applications for transmission lines, and you'll see those when they come.
And this is a, this is going to be a lot of grading and filling on this project.
Absolutely. There is quite a bit of grading. There's some sheet flow that runs across it. I know Stephen could probably tell you, he's been working with our engineer, and they've been working pretty closely together. And we're planning on submitting that grading application, building application in the near future. But it is a pretty substantial amount, I think, flow coming, and I believe it comes from the east and comes across kind of the northeast heading across. But again, we're going to meet all the, you know, development code standards and engineering standards. And there's some retention ponds that we have on there and direction, some birmingham and channeling and that sort. So we're taking care of it.
Sure you are. Mr. Sadler?
Will that be able to be done with what's on site? Are they going to have to haul earth in or fill in?
No, the grading, I haven't looked at the most recent one. The last one that I was looking at there, I think everything was on site, but I can't recall. Was it, was there 12,000, something like that? Throwing Stephen in front of the bus here, but.
Yeah, I remember off the top of my head, it was close to even. I think they need to bring in a little bit of fill, but it's not a large amount.
Thank you. I would think that a expansion of this magnitude.
Mike?
Expansion of this magnitude should certainly lower our power bill.
Well, you may have noticed in the newspaper that the rates did come down. So they're anticipating it, I suppose, from this development. I don't know what we do if it doesn't get approved. I don't know what happens to rates then.
It's actually not related to this. Mr. Solano?
Yesterday, I experienced about a five-hour discontinuance of power by Nevada Energy.
Yeah, I'd suggest you take a lesson.
And I paid my bill too. I paid my bill.
I don't know. I'll check.
The whole neighborhood went out. But it made me realize how important electricity is, you know, to each and all of us. The only comment that I would have is, Mark, isn't there something you can do to make those things more attractive?
You know, I know I'm biased, but I think they're gorgeous. So actually, this is one of the ones that, this one's kind of unique in the sense that it's set back from the road, quite a ways from the road already. And the development with the grading, it actually drops it below. The line of sight, I mean, it's practically invisible. This one, this is one of the best ones we have.
I understand. It is a necessary evil.
Well, Harry's entitled to their opinion. I don't view it that way. They're necessary, but they're not evil. Are you just harassing me, Dan? Is that what you're doing?
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody here from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any further comments? I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Solano?
Okay. I move to approve SUP-15-179, a special use permit, request from Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA NV Energy, owner Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA NV Energy, to allow expansion of a utility substation in the General Industrial zoning district located at 3175 Asphalt Drive, APN 008-522-07, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Have a second. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Six, none, nothing, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nothing works. You can't even cook dinner.
Well, your gas furnace, your gas furnace doesn't work.
We had about five hours of outage, something like that last night.
Because your gas furnace doesn't work either, because you haven't electric.
We had to go out for dinner.
Oh, how terrible.
I thought we were going to. You do realize how important electricity is when something like that happens. You know, it's really important when that happens during the daytime, to turn a light on somewhere. And when it does come on.
You know that it's on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Staff reports. Directors report to the commission.
Thank you. Just a brief update on. Just a brief update on items previously before the board, at the January 7th Board of Supervi, I'm sorry, previously before the commission. At the January 7th Board of Supervisors meeting, they reviewed the townhomes, tentative subdivision map, and partial street abandonment, and that, and that was approved.
No, over.
Oh, yeah, the townhomes on Anderson Street, kind of Anderson Caroline Robinson Street over a little east of, yeah, not too far from, not too far from here. We had a number of items on this meeting that'll be going, a couple items that'll be going to the Board of Supervisors in February, and we'll update you on those later, we'll bring those forward. In terms of future, for the next planning commission agenda, we actually only have, I think we only have one item that'll be on the agenda, but it's a pretty big, interesting one. It's the Lampa Ranch specific plan area. They're coming in with the, that's the, they're coming in with a pretty thick document that comes in with the rezoning and master plan for the, for most of the property, for most of the Lampa Ranch property. But also, it comes with a lot of the guidelines for development, so it will be an interesting discussion, and even though there's one item on there, that'll be, that'll be a pretty big item on the agenda. And then the other thing that I want to report is that, Susan was, was, was sick tonight, so I'm sorry, sorry she couldn't be here to go over these items, but she's not going to stay with us, she's not going to stay with us full-time. She's going to resign as, as planning manager, but, you know, she, but she's, we're going to try to keep her on as a part-time and part-time employee to help us around the office, but, yeah, we're sorry, we're sorry to lose her for, at that level, but we do want to try, try to keep her around for, for a bit and to help with other projects. So this, just wanted to note that. And I think that's all I had to report.
Okay. Mr. Sadler.
Did I read or leave the Silver Oak project? Was that delayed, or put up? I can't remember.
Did I not report? Oh, that was probably because, okay, so I didn't go back to December. The Silver Oak, that appeal was heard in December, but I think, because your meeting was early, it was probably right at the day after this meeting. Yeah, the appeal was, the planning commission approved the apartments over by the Silver Oak Clubhouse. The board heard, heard the appeal, and after quite a long meeting and a lot of testimony, they did uphold the planning commission meeting, I mean, the planning commission's approval, and in fact, it was by a, by a five-o vote that it was upheld.
And one other quick thing, that Lampa, her deal, my wife's cousin is Dan Keating, who lives on that property. I mean, that shouldn't be a problem, should it? That you could see.
No, not, not that relationship per se.
I mean, I know, but it's not business.
Right. No, that's not a problem.
Otherwise, I was going to take the meeting off, if that's the only thing.
No, you can't do that. Okay. Do any commissioners have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Well, I don't have anything. At this time, we entertain public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the planning commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move. Second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.